Welcome to the Selectmen's meeting for January 15th, 2020. First item is salute the flag.
Pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States of America
And to the republic
for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Town administrator, weekly update. The floor is yours, Jen.
All right. So, not too many things this week. First thing, I just wanted to let you know that I met with Jenny Gore in regards to the tree lighting. She wanted to, she hasn't had a chance to kind of publicly thank the board and everybody from the town that helped out. She did go to a rec. meeting and met with them and helped them. So, just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. So, if you recall, probably in October-ish, she came to the board because she was looking for a little bit of assistance because she was having a knee surgery. And the rec. did step in and helped her out with that. It was kind of a team effort, but it is something that she's still continuing and planning on running. She's hoping that the rec. or other people from the public will continue to help, but she still wants to be the contact. She's already scheduled the hall for the day that she's going to do it in 2020 and is looking forward to moving forward with anybody's help. She appreciates the board, the town, and of course, the rec. for their help, but it is still her event.
Okay.
One of the things last week that came up under public comment from one of our residents was a recommendation that a blurt be put at the bottom of the bills in regards to fire and rescue, telling them that we had some options for them. So, I have been emailing with Sean McPherson, who is our contact at medical reimbursement. The bills used to say, "If you have any questions on this bill or have insurance, please call so-and-so or email so-and-so." We have added the line that says, "We also accept monthly payments and financial hardships. Please contact us directly for more information." So, it's already been done, so it will be appearing on the bills as they go out.
Great.
I have scheduled you a meeting with your attorney on January 29th at 4:45 for drug, the drug policy. I think that's easier. He's just going to come in and meet with you guys in a workshop just to go over some concerns. 4:45. Some concerns we had, talk about how medical marijuana affects the CDL and the state federal guidelines, so. That'll be on the 28th, and I will remind you.
Did you say the 28th?
29th. It's a Wednesday. With the resignation of someone from the rec. committee, someone else reached out and asked me if we had an opening on the rec. committee. I had the conversation, I think, with one of you that that individual may be eighth spot, so there are currently seven members, so it's certainly up to you to decide if you want to just leave it at seven and let them see how it goes, or did you want me to advertise that they had one opening?
I think you're better off with a long number when you're doing a vote. I think the seven right now is fine.
I think seven makes more sense, too.
I say more than Mary, but...
Seven or nine, I guess. I mean, it does make sense to be an odd number.
Right.
Nine seems like a little much, so...
Yeah. Okay. I got an email from a couple of different individuals looking for veterans enacting that might need some help. There's a couple of Rolling Thunder chapters and an individual family. They've both specifically asked for veterans that might be needing of assistance, so if anybody knows of someone that, whether it's heating oil or food or whatever it may be, can contact me and I can get you in touch with them and see if there's something that these organizations might be able to do to help. The new copier is finally being delivered on Friday.
Yay!
So, and they're also bringing the motor vehicle printer that was upstairs, so...
Is this the new, this downstairs?
The downstairs copiers. We got it side of the lease.
The one they wanted?
Well, yeah. They're getting the identical one to upstairs because it works for them.
Okay. So, they're getting, yeah, so they're getting the one that they really wanted in the first place?
No, the one they wanted is the one that is down there. That's the one that they chose.
Yeah.
But it didn't work out, right?
But that's not the one that's working out for them?
Correct. Didn't work to the, how they would like, so, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Still waiting on a date from ADT for camera installation, but hopefully that's coming in soon. I emailed you guys a packet today from May Municipal. We have a chance just to take a peek at it. It really goes over the 2020 dues, kind of talks about, you know, what exactly you pay for, and it has a lot of important dates, calendar dates, that might be helpful to you as far as deadlines that we have to meet, so I want you to take a peek at it. The next two kind of, actually, let's skip those two for a minute. They kind of run together. The gym, I have, I spent some time yesterday with Gail Bovare. Her and Mr. Baxter and Jordan Burrard and a couple other people have been working very hard on the list. Her and I sat down yesterday and went through. They've made a lot of signs and instructions and directions and things that they've wanted, so they're in the process of getting them all printed and hung up. We'll start taking some visual pictures and send them over to the insurance company. In the meantime, we've also had a small increase of sign-ups. People have kind of been coming in and signing up, so we'll keep you posted on what they say as those weigh each other out. All right, so, the district attorney. Let's start with the district attorney and Article 43. So, as you know, and I don't have the application, but I think we can, we should all have it memorized. So, I reached out to the district attorney's office via email, asking them for some assistance with Article 43 per your instruction. I haven't gotten any response. It's been, I guess, about a week or so now. So, we have our state representative, Mr. Kryzak, who has been communicating with Mr. Winchell and essentially says that he's going to walk our questions over to him, over to the office to try to get us some assistance. So, as I prepared to put a packet together or a list of questions, I guess I just wanted to have the conversation of what exactly am I asking them? So, you know what I mean? I really, literally want to write down your questions and I'll put it together in a draft letter.
Well, we definitely...
So, here's the warrant article. I mean, do we want to, what do you think?
Well, yeah, that would be good. What do you think? We also want to know, you know, the laws, the rules.
I mean, do they consider it a legal warrant article the way it's written?
Well, I think what we ought to do is we send in the warrant article, okay, and then we have to have some specific questions.
Right, and that's what I need from you guys.
Does this, is this, does this abide by state statute? Does it, does maintenance?
Yeah.
Is that included into this statute? Does our ordinance cover that? And, uh... That's pretty much most of it, but, um...
I guess any suggestions they can give us, you know, would be really nice.
I mean, I think that the biggest issue that we've had as we start looking at Article 43 is as they go through the questions, it's finding the correct link and finding the most accurate, up-to-date website. Because we're having, you know, I told you that Wendy Garland from the DEP called me because she's being, someone from Acton is reaching out to her, questioning some of the things that you guys are doing, and we had a big, a long conversation about maintenance and that you understand that it's not for maintenance. But there seems to be different places, like one of them, like the list of the great ponds, there's different places that you can find that, and you know what I mean? And they're not the identical lists.
Yeah, the problem we're having here is we, like we were looking through earlier, okay? We had an individual email us saying that this road didn't qualify, even though it was on the survey, on the survey, but the road didn't qualify. So, now at this point, now we're not just looking at that, we're looking at whether or not the road qualified, you know, because of the survey.
Right.
So, we got to get clarification here of exactly what we're allowed to do by state statute.
What we need for proof, what they need, I guess, what the applicants need. How detailed does it need to be? Can it just be they're on the great pond, the watershed survey, or does it have to come down to the road? And where do we get the information so that we can check it? The right information, whether it's packets or...
Yeah, is that something, I mean, those lists that they maintain that, you know, we're trusting off the DEP site?
Right, I mean, yeah, what's most up-to-date? Up-to-date, I guess, would be the best.
All right, I was trying to draft some sort of letter. He goes to Augusta on, what'd he say, Tuesdays and Thursdays, I think, so he wants to be able to pick up a packet by Monday, so...
Says he's had to do this before for Atlanta and Fishery stuff, where he's made phone calls and they didn't call, so he went right direct there and he was able to get stuff done. So, he says it's right across the street, so...
Yeah, no, I'm just having trouble understanding exactly what I'm asking them.
Yeah.
So, that's what I'm, I was kind of struggling, but, all right, let me see what I can put together.
We got to know whether or not what we do is legal.
Right.
And right now, if we can give a...
Is the overall question, right?
I mean, I don't know if maybe, maybe we ought to give a description of what we've been doing, and if, you know...
Well, that's kind of, I don't want to say all over the place, but that's kind of up and down, too.
Well, exactly. I mean, we started paying for maintenance, because most of it was, and we take the bill in and have them look at it and say, you know, is this something that we're legally allowed to pay for? I don't know, he might need, they might need an example, you know, so they're not kind of shooting in the dark.
And I think that in, I mean, in fairness...
Do they have guidelines up there? Could we ask them if they have guidelines for us?
And, I mean, in fairness, I feel like they should see, you know, Burke &amp; Clegg's, you know, email to us as well when we originally started it because, you know, he wrote the letter and drafted it.
Yeah, definitely.
All right, I'll work on it. I'll work on it. All right, so that's the email. I don't know where packet number three went. I swear I hit three on the copier, but you got two, and you have my copy. So, that's the email that came from the individual today. It did indicate to him that it would be on the agenda. He's not going to be attending. We do need to put some sort of response in. I just, looking for some direction from the board.
So, we read email so that people know what we're talking about.
Sure. All the information.
At least this, yeah?
Go ahead.
Who are we going right ahead to? Me?
Either one. Yep. Good, Kim.
All right. "I went to the state as well to get answers about Article 43. These folks are from the DEP. These are the people that set the guidelines for private roads. I've attached Appendix B Sight List from Mossom Lake Survey, along with the newsletter sent out to property owners from Tattle Street Road Association. As you can clearly read from the emails from different people at the DEP, that in order to qualify for aid under the statute listed in Article 43, the road must be on the survey list for that particular great pond that it's on." Now, this says Tattle Street is not on that list. Furthermore, as indicated by the emails, the money received from the municipality must be used to address the cause listed on the lake survey. That is leading to degradation of the lake, not for future maintenance or ongoing maintenance. You misappropriated taxpayer funds to Tattle Street Road Association. They went and misappropriated those funds to magic grant from the state. It seems the town has made a mess of this situation. I'm seriously hoping you will do the right thing and get this money back before it turns into a bigger situation. One selectman has said many times that you want to make sure that you do it right. Now is our chance. I will look forward to your reply."
I think, actually, I think pretty much everything in that email is what we were just talking about, we're going to ask.
Right. And I guess what I hear in that email and my question of whether it's accurate or not is, is the part we was talking about, that the road has to be, like you said, the road has to be listed on there. And what, doesn't, didn't he say in there that the damage has to be listed?
I didn't see that in this one.
Yeah.
Or the degradation, blah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, what he's, what he's saying is, you take the whole Mossom Lake watershed, okay, and they got your survey, and we're looking at it on our paperwork where it says, "Are you part of a survey?" And it, Markoff, yes, okay? And so, we think you're all good. What he's saying, and I believe Linda Shire...
Wendy.
Wendy Garland, I think, was pretty much in the same, saying the same thing was...
No maintenance.
Break it, yeah. Break it down one more step for the road.
Because you're on the, you're a part of the survey, but is your road actually a hotspot to be worked on?
Right.
So, if it's not on the hotspot list, then it doesn't qualify. On Article 43, the only thing we ask for is whether or not you're part of the survey.
Right, yeah, right.
Which they are, but we don't have a thing saying, "Are you on a hotspot on the list?" So, that's where the hairs are getting split here.
Right, and that's what we're trying to figure out from the Attorney General's office, if we have to have that, yeah.
Yeah.
Can I see that for someone?
And, and, and it kind of...
Yeah, I'm, go ahead.
Go ahead, David.
And another thing is here about, you know, the misappropriation of funds. When Tattle Street came to us, they came to us with a bill.
Right.
Okay? For this work and this work and this work to be done. After we write the check to Tattle Street where they appropriated the money, it doesn't make any sense, because when they came to us, they came to us with a bill for work that had been done.
Done, right.
So, it doesn't make, I don't understand where the appropriation, where they put the money in afterwards. I guess you could say that the contract has probably already been paid.
No, he's saying that the town misappropriated the funds by giving it to them. Not that Tattle Street misappropriated.
It was us, he's saying.
But at the time, we didn't misappropriate because we went by the list, at least...
No, no, I'm just...
That we had in hand. So, you know, like I said, we're splitting hairs here. One thing says, yes, they are part of the pond survey, which they were.
And they also had before, yeah, what was the grant they had?
But nothing on there says, "Is your road on this list?" So...
But that wasn't a question that we were asking initially.
No, wasn't a question that anybody had given us to ask.
Right.
And the reason why we shut this down is because of all these things have come up.
Right.
I think we've done, and the auditor said the other night that we did what we needed to do. We shut this program down, okay, until we can figure this out.
Yeah.
And, you know, instead of beating a dead horse, we're just trying to do what's right here, and I, and I am the person that said over and over that I want to have this right.
Yeah.
And that's what we're trying to do, so I don't...
Well, I think right now, I mean, I don't think, there's nothing else we need to do with this at the moment, is there?
No, I told them we would discuss it.
Right.
I think I'll just follow up on the email saying that we're working on putting questions together for the district attorney and that...
Really, about half of what he's asking, and there's questions that we're going to ask the district attorney, so...
I mean, he does have, he does have points, and unfortunately, it's come to the point where, and this is Jeff Donahue, Donahue or Donahue, Donahue. I like to make sure that we know who's writing the stuff, so, you know, he has good points. The unfortunate part is, is a lot of this stuff wasn't looked up prior, and maybe it was rushed a little bit, and we're trying to fix that problem.
Yeah. Okay. I don't think we need to go in any more depth of that until we hear back from the Attorney General's office, so...
All right, that's all I have for this week.
Okay.
We've already done them.
Anything else?
Sure.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, warrants and bills, have you signed?
Yep.
You've signed? I've signed.
We signed it. We were here Monday.
Yep.
I was.
I'll say briefly.
Yes.
I know, it's an ongoing joke now. I apologize for not being here last, last week, and I had to duck out Monday as well, so... But, anyway, here we are. So, I guess at that point, approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Moved and?
We'll second that motion.
We're here seconded to approve the agenda? Okay, moved and seconded to approve the agenda? Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay.
This I had already done.
I went for December 18th here.
Minutes of the last meeting, we get...
This is, this one's already been done. I did this one.
Two meeting minutes that you have to approve.
I already approved that.
The 18th was already done, wasn't it?
I thought so, but that was...
There are two weeks. So, there's last weeks, and then there's, what weeks do you have there?
I've only got the 8th. And for some reason, I got the, I got the January 8th, but I've got some...
Yep, and 18th. These didn't get approved.
Thought we already did.
No, you did the 11th.
Give me one of them and I'll do it, and we'll table it for next week. I'll work on it. Is this the right one?
I went through it already.
Well, which one? Is this the one I wasn't at? I need the one I was at.
Last weeks you were at. That's the other one. That one you weren't at.
Right.
That's why, that's why you couldn't approve it last week.
All right.
And David has read those.
Okay.
They're good.
Okay.
Those ones are good.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda for December 18th, 2019.
Minutes?
The minutes of the meeting.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to approve December 18th. Any further discussion? Over vote, all in favor? All opposed?
And then you have last weeks, which was the 8th.
And if you want, I'll do those.
Which ones?
Let's...
8th.
8th, last weeks, because Ed wasn't here.
I'm going to table these till next week because I haven't read it yet.
Okay.
But I'll take care of it and get it done.
Okay. Next on our list here, department heads, committee chairs. Any department heads, committee chairs? Going once, going twice? Okay? Full business. Goat Hill.
Still pending. I did not hear back from Mr. Davis, so I trust he's still working on that.
Okay. Cleaning services.
So, the individual that you awarded the cleaning services to has decided not to take the position after all. If you recall, we were really weighing heavily between two people because they were very similar in price. One was going more for an hourly rate as an employee, the other was independent contractor with, with insurance, which didn't sort out, so I'm looking for just a motion to approve the cleaning and award it to Marietton, which was our second.
I'll make a motion that we give the cleaning bid to Marietton.
No, second that.
Moved and seconded to award the cleaning bill to Marietton. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed? Sounds good.
Been a long month.
Yes. Be nice.
Okay, new business. Pool station contact. Tract.
Is there an R in there? Oh, good. So, um...
I just can't say.
Last week, they, two of them did review this, so the fire chief essentially came through and picked a minimum of, minimum amount of pool stations he'd like. This is throughout the entire building. We agreed on five or six, so it was $1,650 for those to all be installed and a monthly fee of $6. And they already approved it, but there was no actual contract. He wouldn't, I didn't have him draft the contract until they approved it last week, so that just needs signature.
Okay.
Speaking of signature, not to change the subject, but Kim, I left you something in there. It said, "Kim, sign." It was the collections contract. Did you see it? Because only David had signed it last week, and I needed two.
Okay.
Did you see that?
I didn't, but I'll...
Don't leave without me finding it, please.
Is it? Okay.
Sorry, Ed.
It's okay. Yeah, it's okay. Okay, ADT commercials, fire lamp system. Yeah, they're installing five...
Five, yeah.
Five pool stations at the exterior doors.
The other ones are doing the cameras, too, correct?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I told him he wasn't getting that until I got my cameras.
Fire and burglar lamp system and... Price was on here somewhere.
Second page.
Second page. Oh, yeah, $1,650, and the monthly fee is $6.08. Okay. Do I hear a motion? Have the pool stations installed?
I make a motion, we accept the ADT contract for the pool stations for $1,650.
And the monthly fee?
Monthly fee of $608.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to accept the ADT contract to have them put in. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed?
So, while you're signing those, I'll mention, too, that our handyman tomorrow will be installing the exit signs that the fire chief wanted. He wanted them to glow in the dark, but, I mean, he wanted them to be battery backup, but we settled on glowing in the dark. Couldn't find any.
Just one of us needs assigned.
No, I'd rather two, because the auditor, two people. And this, I'm giving you this back because it's only got one signature on it.
Okay. What is today's date? 14th? It's 14th, 15th? Thank you.
I don't know. I think it was tucked in. Dave signed it, but not you or me. Okay, policies.
There you go. Thank you.
So, on the 18th, we had a first reading of the dishonored checks policies. The treasurer did make a couple of changes. I'll give you all copies, and I'm hoping to get this signed tonight, and I'll just go through the changes. So, on the first, on the first paragraph, if you follow along, it used to say, "The policy described for processing the collection of dishonored checks." The next line was, "All checks payable to town are processed on the day received with a part-time treasurer." That line was taken out altogether. Three paragraphs down where it says, "A notice of dishonor will be sent via," it used to say, "a certified return receipt." The law only requires that it's certified mail. We don't have to have the receipt card back as long as we can track that they signed it. And then the town will charge a return check fee for each return check. Then the very last paragraph, "A do-not-accept-checks list will be maintained, naming persons and entities who have given dishonored checks to the town two times in a period of one year." It used to be two years, and then it says, "For the next two years, payment from those persons will be accepted in only cash, cashier's check or money order." It used to be four years, so we knocked it out from four to two.
Okay.
That's her recommendation, so those are the only changes. You've already reviewed it once, so looking for signatures on just one of those copies, please.
What's your wishes on this? What's your wishes on this? Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to accept the town of Acton dishonored checks policy.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to accept the dishonored checks policy. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed?
Get it.
Yeah.
All right, so, the other ones, so we saw the drug testing pending, the freedom of information policy. You guys have reviewed, we're not gonna sign it until next week because, the formatting issue, but I'm gonna give you a couple for next week, because these are pretty small, and we should be able to whip right through them. I thought maybe we could just talk about them quickly?
Sure.
That's a full set, so that goes to date. Nope. Those are three different ones, so just pass that group down. Yep, that's another set.
That's another set, one for you.
You.
All right, so the first one is the emergency closure policy. Said municipal officers and transfer station may be closed in the event of weather, other public emergency. Every attempt will be made to service the townspeople of Acton while keeping the safety of our employees in mind. During extreme weather conditions, town administrator will consult with a road commissioner about the road conditions. Town administrator will then decide whether to delay the opening or close of town services. The board of selectmen, transfer station superintendent, and department heads will be notified immediately of the decision. Whenever possible, a decision will be made within two hours before the scheduled opening of the municipal services. Employees who are scheduled to work will be notified of any delay or closure by their immediate supervisor. Employees should direct questions or concerns to their immediate supervisor. The town administrator will make every attempt to notify the public of the emergency closing via the town's website, local news, and cable television station, as long as updating the voicemail on her 401 phone extension. The board recognizes, depending on the emergency, all of these methods of notifying the public may not always be available. Thoughts, concerns, changes? Michelle had circled the 401 phone extension, as updating the voicemail on her 401 phone extension...
Does that have to be in there?
Well, she didn't really like the way that it flowed, but what I'm trying to, what I'm, I guess I'm trying to say in there, I don't want people to think that they can call in and the main system greeting is gonna be changed. You have to go to my extension, because that's the only one I can change from home. You know what I mean? I don't wanna have to change the main one every time we close. So I'm...
Should that, should that say on her 401 extension, or on the town administrators?
It could. So on the town administrator's phone extension, which is 401?
Yeah, 401.
Right, that might be better.
Yep.
That's just an easy ways to save people from driving up, because a lot of times they'll call ahead to see if we're open, and if I can change that from home, it's helpful. So, all right, so I'll work on that for next week. Any other thoughts, concerns on closing early?
Nope.
I feel like we do it pretty rarely, we, you know what I mean? We wanna keep the employees safe, but at the same time, we are pay the tax, or taxpayer money.
Well, the thing is, is if you leave the town hall open during a really bad event, people will come.
Right.
We want to keep as many people out the roads, for the road commissioners, everybody else, and it's just better for everybody.
Yep.
I mean, if we know that it's gonna, you know, snow all day constant, then we'll certainly close. But if it's gonna stop by, you know, nine, ten o'clock, I mean, I feel like we owe it to the townspeople to come in and...
Or if they're really predicting, you know, two or three or four inches, what, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
All right, so the next one is the excise tax exemption policy. This is the policy that veteran who has exemption of purple heart license plate with a class code PH, or somebody that is being paid at a hundred percent. So this is for veterans combined service connection evaluation at a hundred percent, as indicated on their summary of benefits. So they actually have to bring that in. We black out their monthly payment, we black out their social, and we attach it to the pink copy of the motor vehicle, so that when the auditor comes in a year later and says, why is John Doe exempt? Why didn't you charge him? They can see the form.
Okay.
Eligible veterans are exempt until a maximum of two exemptions for an automobile, a truck, which they own. For vehicles registered in the name of the veteran, the exemption continues until both spouses have died, or until the non-veteran spouse remarries. Need to add a period there. And then eligible veterans applying for new plates have to follow the state guidelines. So we have probably five people in the town that, that qualify for this, and I can tell you that they are extremely grateful every year when they come in to renew. It's not something you have to do, but it's something that was started many years ago.
And this is strictly for purple heart?
Purple heart, or, no, they can have, we added that last year.
Okay, or be a hundred percent.
Or be a hundred percent, yeah.
Okay. Good.
So D, it says that they can have DV or regular license plate.
Okay.
Some of them don't like to advertise that they're DV.
Right.
So we took that away, and as long as they could show us that they were being paid at a hundred percent.
Right.
That the service determined they were a hundred percent.
Yep.
Any changes there under the period that I found?
Nope.
Nope.
So I'll make that, bring that up for next week. Employee wage policy, Michelle left us a nice smiley face on this one. Board of selectmen, unless voted otherwise at the annual town meeting, have the authority to assign the employee's hourly wage. The department head may make a recommendation to the board of selectmen as to what the employee's wage should be, but ultimately, it is a decision of the board. The recommendation must be submitted to the selectmen in writing a minimum of twenty-one days before it takes effect. Starting wage, as well as any future increases, should be considered on experience, longevity, and merit. At no time will the board of selectmen approve a wage that is less than state or federal minimum wage. This was put in place, I think, a few years back, just to remind, the department heads, they can make recommendations to you, but essentially, it is the board's decision on the hourly rate.
Sounds good.
Thoughts, concerns?
Looking fine.
David's mulling it over.
Well, this, this isn't just...
It's just a first reading. It's just for anybody, yeah.
This is everybody, so that means, anybody there that the road commission's hire...
Correct, as employees.
As employees, they're gonna have to come to us to, to okay the wage?
Increases other than the three percent, so a new...
But what about the hiring?
Well, I mean, if they're town employees, you're, they're your employees.
I mean, uh, because, if, say I'm a road commissioner, right, and I, I go and hire a new guy, I can hire him at the max rate, and I won't have to worry about the raises. You know what I'm saying?
Right.
So, I'm just, I'm just, I mean, myself, I always thought the road commission decided who, what their pay was, but by, if you go by this policy, they're gonna have to be in line also.
Well, I mean, you could make, the, I mean, it, it's the board's choice, I'm just putting it out there. You could make elected officials staff exempt, but I'm gonna be honest with you, one of the reasons they put this policy in place was because they had two different road commissioners hiring new people in at different out, you know what I mean?
It was kind of a good idea to a point, but you, we gotta make sure that they, they know that they're, they're part of this.
Well, as you sign and update these, the departments are getting notified, so...
Getting notified, yeah.
You can give us some thought, I mean, we don't have to, you know...
Yeah. Good, yeah, think about it.
And for the most part, the board has supported all of, supported the rates, but I think one of the issues we ran into was that, you know, one side was starting a lot higher than the other side, for the same general laborer, and we had employees that were working, you know, ten, fifteen years, and they weren't even at the highest rate, right?
They were making less than the people coming on.
Or you could make those, that department exempt, if you feel like...
Two different, there's two, there's two different arguments to that point.
Right.
Yep.
Let me know what you wanna do. We'll set that one aside for now. All right.
Good, okay. All set with policies?
Yes, sir.
So we're gonna table these for next week?
Yep.
Yeah, it was just a first reading. I figured it'd be easier just to see if you had any issues, so I could just prep them for next week.
Okay, recommendations on STM.
What is that?
Yeah, what is STM?
Special town meeting?
Ah.
I need an actual motion.
Do we pick a date?
Oh, we got a date, we got a warrant.
I was gonna say, I thought we were, I thought we were there already.
February third.
So, I just need motions and warrants, to see if, motions and seconds, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from undesignated fund eighteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars for Acton's share of the Emery Mills Dam project that exceeds the previously budgeted amount of seventy-five thousand. Acton's total share of the project was ninety-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion, do what, do the article?
Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Do we accept the article as written?
I make a motion, and we accept the article as written.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to accept the article as written?
Yep.
In red?
Yep.
All in favor?
We are.
Okay, well, you're looking at me, I thought you wanted me to say something.
Okay, so moved and seconded? Any for the discussion?
No.
Call for vote, all in favor? Opposed?
And I think I told you about this, Ed. Kim and David discussed it last week. To see if the town will authorize the board of selectmen to appropriate and expend additional monies from the undesignated fund balance for the purchase of equipment, or to use as they deem advisable to meet unanticipated expenses and emergencies that occur during the nineteen-twenty fiscal year. Expenditures in excess of five hundred dollars shall require advice and recommendation of the Warren and Finance maximum expenditure of fifteen thousand. And then there's a note that says, this is in addition to monies expended in Article eleven from the June two thousand nineteen town meeting that were utilized to purchase and install a new heating system in the Acton Fire Rescue Building.
Yep. No, that, that article is exactly...
It's a word for...
What was voted on in June.
Just replenishing account.
Exactly, so, okay, do I hear a motion on that article? Anyone? Anyone you do at all?
Make a motion to accept? Go ahead.
No, you got it, it's your turn.
My turn. All right, um, make a motion to accept, uh, the article as written.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to accept the article as written. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, all it's doing is replenishing, like you said, what we had taken out, so...
So the Warren and Finance is meeting on Tuesday, January twenty-first. They're gonna make their recommendations, hopefully, and the board will sign it on the twenty-second, and we'll get it posted in time for the special town meeting.
Sounds good. Okay. We have a executive session. Do we wanna do the planning? No, let's do the executive session.